Clerk Paul, can we call committee hold to order, please?
Lennon?
Here.
Roywood?
Here.
Leesha?
Here.
Fate?
Here.
Cobone?
Here.
Ruiz?
Here.
Aronella? Carmichael?
Here.
Seven present mayor.
I'll make a motion to excuse Alderman Aronella.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second and by Ruiz to excuse Alderman Aronella. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we have two presentations for this evening. We have, Alderman Aronella is here. We have the SBC Waste Solutions presentation. They're the competing bidder on our waste removal. And we have the 2022 Annual Financial Report. Mr. Tash and Mr. Wysocki, we're going to start off with SBC. It's all yours.
Thank you for coming. And Mr. Mayor, Ruth over there, members of the council, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to present to you. This is a fantastic opportunity for our organization, and we are very excited about becoming a member of the City of Berwyn family. So I'm going to go through our agenda of what we plan to talk about today. So we're going to talk about brief introductions of who we've brought with us today. We're going to talk a little bit about who we are as a company. We're going to go through the benefits of selecting SBC. We're also going to talk about the environment and how we work with our community. We're going to talk a little bit about what you get with our bid, as well as how would a rollout look like for the City of Berwyn. We'll have a summary, and then we'll take questions. So attendees, we have our president and CEO, Karen Coley, to my right here. Okay? We have Sean Flood, who is our managing partner. We have Caesar Anaya, which is the operations, residential operations manager. And my name is Paul Cuda, and I am in finance and technology. So a little bit about who we are. Well, SBC, we are a fully owned, a fully woman-owned company. We have...
...the WBNC separation to do with all of our trucks, so we are really looking for... Sorry.
Okay, I'll start over from, sorry.
Yes, we are... It's battery. Try this one. March.
Test, test. Okay. Okay, so we are a fully owned woman corporation, and we're all about the people. Our customers, the community as a whole, our employees, as well as the larger community, we're very interested in a people-first mentality. We were established in 2017, and we've been growing at about 40% year-over-year income. We are, we go, our boundaries go over Chicagoland area. We go all the way from Indiana, all the way up to Wisconsin. We're servicing over 60,000 customers currently. We are environmentally focused and financially strong due to our growth and how we've managed our organization. Quality and customer satisfaction is one of the keys to our growth. This has been something we've done from the very beginning. It's something that has helped us grow. It's something we're doing today and something we plan to do in the future. So those are two key principles for our organization. So what are some of the benefits of going to, going with SBC? Well, we're going to talk about our experience in the waste industry, our customer-driven satisfaction, our safety and success through technology, and the significant cost savings that you'll get. Our experience. So on average, our employees have about 15 years of experience in the waste industry. So they've worked at larger waste organizations, they've worked with larger companies. An example of that is Caesar, right here. He worked on the City of Berwyn recycling program, which is called the Blue... Sorry, what did I say?
Sorry.
Huh, sorry. He didn't work on that yet. But the City of Chicago rollout of the recycling that was called the Blue Cart. And Caesar was instrumental in rolling out that. So he, we have that experience on our team of doing large-scale rollouts. As far as the people coming from all different companies, we consider it as a major benefit for us, because they've seen the good and the bad at these other larger companies. And what we're trying to do is take all that information, the good, the bad, boil it down, and kind of get rid of the inefficiencies and negativity and things, and come up with a pure product that's all about customer service and quality. So that's what we're looking to do with our team. As far as experience from operations perspective, we have over 20 years of experience on average with that group, and they're focused on working on our routes, working on efficiencies, getting things done, working with the City of Berwyn to see, okay, we have these routes, but what if we change them? Can we get better service for our customers? Can we get their garbage emptied earlier? Can we do things more effectively? So we will constantly be looking to improve and working with, working with the city. We have a mentality of proactiveness. So we could be reactive, where the customer calls in and there's a problem, but we're really focused on being proactive. We want to find out and fix the problem beforehand, if at all possible. So we have several ways we're going to talk about that we do this, through technology, through actual people working on being proactive, but it's much better for us to be proactive than reactive. We also, well, you'll hear us talk about things like continuous improvement. We don't sit back and wait once we have something that is working pretty well. We'll still ask the question, you know, can we make that better? And so we will constantly be looking for continuous improvement. As far as our drivers go, we realize drivers are very important to us. They are the face of the organization. The drivers, you know, picking up the trash is just one part of the driver's job. We need the drivers to be, you know, it's how they drive. Are they courteous? How do they respond when asked questions? Are they, are they kind and so forth? The bottom line is, we have weekly meetings and we set expectations of excellence. You know, we're not here to be as good as anyone else. We're really looking to set the bar and be the best. And so we constantly are pressing, pushing on excellence overall in our safety meetings, in our weekly meetings, and across the board. And we believe that doing job right the first time is what's best for everyone, saves time, customer's happy, and it's more efficient for us, we don't have to come back around and so forth. So doing things right is our goal. And if I, if we could have zero call-ins from the customers, that would be fantastic. Now, that doesn't always happen, but it's a goal that, you know, we can strive for. Now, if we're not proactive, if we're, can't be proactive, we certainly have to be... Excuse me? Okay, there we go. So in the event that we're unable to be proactive, there's always going to be times when the customers have to call in. And so we like to talk a little bit about how we deal with that. So our customer service center is local here. It's only about four miles away. It is both English and Spanish, bilingual across the board, and that's in every aspect of our company. It's not just in customer service, it's not in operations, it's in accounting, and the vast number of our drivers are also bilingual. So we're very fluent in English and Spanish, and, and we're local across the board. I know that, I believe our competition is only local for their operations. I believe their call center and accounting are not local to the organization. So we are local across the board for everything. I mentioned that we are proactive, and that is another one of Caesar and I as roles here. And Caesar actually is driving the routes every week. He's going through every route that we have, and he's looking for things. He's looking, did we miss something? He's looking, are those towders broken? Do they need repair? He's looking, is there trash in the alley? Did something spill out? He is working proactively to try to cut out calls before the customers have, have to make that call. So he's another proactive duty we do, and it's been very effective for us as, so far. Okay. So I'm also going to talk about technology and how we use technology in order to promote safety as well as customer success. We're currently using a GPS tracking system, as well as video recordings, as well as tablets in our day-to-day process. Our GPS tracking is a visual confirmation that each route, of how it's being run currently or how it was run. So we'll be able to see, you know, visually how it ran. So how does this help customer satisfaction? Well, service verification, the things were done. Moves, finger pointing, he said, she said. It shows that the route was run and at what time and so forth. It also accelerates resolution, so that we can immediately tell our customers, yes, they came, or that they will be coming shortly, and if so, we can give them approximate ETA of, you know, they should be there within, in the hour or so. This is a visual representation of what we see. So if we have a particular customer, and then we can see how they're running their route. So as far as being run, you can, you could see that it came down, went through here, and then it left, and it missed this area here. So on a proactive basis, we can go ahead and call that driver and say, hey, it looks like you didn't, it looks like you didn't go over here. Before you get too far away, can you go ahead, double back, pick that up, and get that done? So this is one of, another proactive measure we're taking. We also have in-camera, in-cab cameras. So this is a Lytic system. It's forward-facing cameras on every truck. We have full video recordings on every route. We store all the daily recordings for 10 days, and some of the benefits are, well, crime prevention for the city, because we'll be sharing this information as requested by the police if necessary. It also helps us improve any issue resolution. Someone will say, well, you didn't pick up my trash. Well, we could show them a clip. We'll cut a clip and show it to them and say, well, here's us showing up at this time and at this address, and here's us either picking up the trash, or it's, there was no trash to pick up, or it was somehow we went by it. And if that's the case, we'll certainly resolve it as soon as possible. Also allows us to document any type of incidents that happened. You know, people will say, oh, you hit my garage, or you damaged something, or you hit a power line or something. We have a videos recording of everything that's going on throughout our routes. I'm going to show you just a brief video of what it looks like from the driver's perspective or the cab perspective. So this is what it looks like. It looks down the street, and as it's running, you can see what the driver sees. Here's a truck running. You can also see our cans. We have both black cans for regular trash and green cans for recycling. And he'll go down, he'll go down the street and pick up the next one. But we also have, you know, kind of a, you know, a far version down the street or alley, so we could see anything that's happening, which is helpful for us as well as potentially others. And this is where we would cut that video from and mail it to someone, and they could see exactly what happened on our route. Okay? I won't play this whole thing, it's kind of more of the same, but... The third thing that we have is we have these tablets. And these, and these tablets are used for a couple things. Every driver has these tablets, and they're for two things. They're for routing. The drivers get all the routing from this to help them do the most efficient routes that they can. And it also has cameras. So in the event we have, in the event we have cameras that we need to take a picture of something, you know, on the sidewalk or on the street or on the other side, we're able to document even further the situation and what has happened. So those are the ways we utilize technology to support our customer's success. And the last benefit I'm going to talk about is going to be the significant cost savings with SBC. If you look at this, you can see that, this is a chart showing, you know, by year and with residents, what is, what is our, the waste management cost? What is the SBC cost? And what are the savings? So you can see that there's significant cost savings in going with SBC. You're looking at, just on the regular garbage, the regular service, almost $12 million less expensive are savings by going with us. And that doesn't, that doesn't, that's just a regular service. If you want to include what we're considering, the roll-off dumpsters and our expectation of what you're, you know, based on other towns we've done, we think it will be another $1.2 million in dumpsters roll-off over the, over the five years. So you're looking at a $13 million savings by going with SBC. So that's significant, or we feel that's significant for the City of Berwyn. So now I'm going to, actually, I thought that that deserved to have its own slide, so I put this one up. Okay, so I'm going to invite Karen Coley, our president and CEO up, to talk about the environment and our community. Karen?
Thanks, Paul. I love coming up after a slide that says $13 million in savings, so it's a good timing for me. My name's Karen Coley, and I, I must be a pretty tough, tough lady to be a woman-owned garbage company in the Chicago area. There's not many of us. And we're a really special organization because of it. We, at SBC, my partners and our team, take such pride in being kind of the disruptors, if you will, in the market. And we've been embraced really, really well. The timing's wonderful to be a WBNC certified company in this market. I mean, let's face it, companies and cities such as yourself, you're very supportive of women-owned businesses. We understand that. And it's, it's, it's really a great message to your community to see a truck going down that's servicing your community with that WBNC certification. I love to speak to youth groups and women's groups, and I love to speak to young women to challenge them. And it's an exciting time to, to be in this market, because we also get to talk about the environment. And what's really important is every time you turn on the TV these days, you're hearing something about, if it's not climate change, it's, it's in every conversation. And we take that very seriously in, in what we do. We're very, very active in trying to be a strategic partner to, to your city. In, in everything we do, with the types of trucks, you'll see we have one of the newest fleets in the market. We're constantly trying to keep our fleet extremely efficient, well-maintained. That way, we can use less trucks on your street, less wear and tear on your street. It's also really important, we're going to try to expand our fleet with some electric vehicles when we feel that those vehicles are ready to really be of service. Right now, they're new in the industry, and they're, they're not very reliable, but we're watching that market very quickly. It is a plan for us to have electric vehicles in our fleet. It's also really important for you to see that we want to be committed to the community on this level. SBC is supported very much by a number of banks, because we take out loans for our trucks, and we're a very big partner with the net zero plans that a lot of the banks have. In fact, I sit on a net zero board at Bank of America. They put a green arrow above my head. But we're seen as, we're really seen as leaders in the Chicagoland on this topic. It's also a really important thing to us, so much so that we're thinking about adding solar power to our facility on our rooftops in Broadview. If you, if you talk to the mayor of Broadview, and I encourage you to do so, we've been a really active member in, in that community and trying to encourage other companies to come together with solar power, perhaps wind power as well as part of our plan. It's really a part about taking care of the environment in all we do. The, obviously recycling, there's discussions with composting. It's educating the, the next generation on, on what's really important, and managing waste in our, in our communities. You'll see that in the City of Berwyn, our community focus will, will be alive and well. You'll see that we, we have employees who's, who have grown up in this town. We have, we have members of our team who have played in your alleys, and, and their aunts and uncles will be serviced by our trucks. I can't tell you the pride that will, that will be in our organization when it's, it's our trucks driving up to our families in this town, when it's the phone calls being answered by people who lived in Berwyn or live in Berwyn. We're extremely respectful of our senior citizens and our veterans, and we offer that front-door service or backdoor service for our seniors and our veterans. We're extremely involved with our Hispanic culture. It means a lot to our staff that drive our trucks or service our people, so much so that we let them name their truck. What's important? We have names on our trucks like Fearless. That one's mine. We have trucks that say Humble, Kindness, because that's what's important to the value system of our organization. You will see us alive and well on nights like the National Night Out, special events like Touch a Truck, so that children and young people can fall in love, hopefully, with our industry. You'll see, I personally love to support libraries. I have a little blue truck myself. I'll show up at your libraries for, for reading hours. Mentoring projects, we love to bring youth into our organization for summer projects. You'll see me mentoring young women. We love to work with the, the Schools for Earth Day projects. We're alive and well in your community. If you talk to any of the other villages that we currently service, they'll tell you the support that we've given. And we're going to show you some of the, some of the, in just a short time of being in business, if you look at how active we are in our communities, that's what we want to be to you. We want to support you on all levels. We consider the opportunity to service the City of Berwyn a person, it's very personal to us. We're not this big corporation with call centers three states away. Those are the people. We're going to know a storm is coming. We're going to know you don't plow alleys and we need to get to that trash ahead of time. We know that when a big storm's coming, we have to be proactive. You're going to hear that all the time with us. We're going to be your partner. And speaking of partner, I'd like to introduce my partner and, and hopefully, the city manager at SBC for Berwyn, Sean Flood.
Well, can you hear me? It's kind of hard sometimes with that, when I go through drive-throughs, people think my, my voice is really raspy, so I hope you guys can understand and hear me clearly. I want to thank Mr. Mayor and all you guys for having us here today. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be able to have this opportunity with you all. As a former planning and zoning commissioner for the Village of Bloomingdale, and a fire commissioner for the Village of Bloomingdale, I know how important it is to vet new vendors and new partners for your municipality and your community. Doing so for 10 years, we brought in new businesses, new plans, and change is good. Sometimes change is scary, but change is always good, and you have to move up with the times. Myself personally would manage and deal with every resident phone call that comes into your community. I would work with all you guys yourselves as well. As you can see, I left my business card with my personal cellphone on every one of your desk today. Feel free to text me, call me, whatever you need, anything like that. I work 24/7, 365 days. I, my, my wife was giving birth, and I had the Village of Bloomingdale calling me, and I stepped out after the baby was born and made the phone call. So I got yelled at for answering that call, but I did answer that call, and I took personally pride in managing that. It just so happened we were doing a rollout at that time, and I was able to have the baby girl that I love today and still successfully get it done. Obviously, we are going to be $7 million invested into this city. It's, it's a huge commitment, and we're ready to go for you guys. We would be establishing all new, brand-new trucks. It'd be a brand-new fleet. Every truck will be brand-new for you guys and dedicated to the City of Berwyn. Most importantly, new carts. I'm just hearing the experiences and looking at reviews and seeing a lot of issues with this community is, carts is a major problem. Everyone in this, obviously, community would get brand-new carts, and it's something that hasn't happened in many, many, many years. It seems like it's a large issue, and I think it would be great to have all new, brand-new carts for your residents. Most importantly, they would be getting a black 95 cart for trash and a six, a 65-gallon cart for recycling that's green. So color-coordinated. People do not read. Let's just be honest. A lot of people are visual, myself included. I take their instructions, I throw it out, and I just try to build anything that I can when I get something in the mail. But having a black cart for trash and a green cart for recycling, in our experience, has been extremely beneficial to your residents. We would have Corano cans with the rubber gaskets that helps protect the recycling and trash from falling out into your alleys and into your streets. Another benefit is we would be having backdoor service, including chemicals and electronics. Your residents no longer have to put it out of the alley. We can remove it freely and no additional charge to your residents at their back door. Of course, if they can call with a 24-hours notice, that would be great. We could schedule that special pickup for them. Most importantly, we'll have a dedicated email to the City of Berwyn, berwyn@sbcowastolutions.com. That email will go directly to my phone and me and me only. So when your residents email, elected officials email, it's going to me first. I designate that email to my call center. I direct my call center on how to handle that issue, concern, or compliment. So any one of those phone calls or emails, well, I'm sorry, emails goes directly to me. If they call my cell, which I have given the residents many, many times, they could call me directly as well. The most important thing is when those emails do come in, it is directed to me and me only. And I'm getting them at 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock at night, Saturday mornings, Sunday during the Bears game, and I handle those issues directly. Senior discounts. If you look at the pricing, seniors are your most important people in your community. They have the lowest pricing in somewhat of the Chicagoland area, especially in your area. Seniors are extremely important. And if you look at the rates that your seniors will be getting, it's some of the lowest. And it's, in my, in my opinion, it's, I take pride in saying that. Seniors are extremely important to our communities, and you, you have to take care of your seniors. That's just my opinion in, in, in any business. Residents' education and the excellent benefit and residents' health quarterly. So basically, we, we plan on educating the residents on recycling. I would hope to work with the city on doing maybe YouTube seminars, you know, discussing in Spanish and English on how to recycle and how to properly recycle. Possibly put a video on the city website and also the SBC website. Special events, toilets and dumpsters. You guys will have the same program, if not better. We are offering the same exact program for everything you guys are currently doing. Nothing will change. Everything's included in your program itself. Natural disaster support. We have a 75-truck fleet right here in Broadview, four miles away. Our call center, our local team members, some who live in Berwyn, are all four miles away. We don't have a call center that's out of state, as Karen and Paul said. Our call centers here, they live in our conditions, they're here. Our operations team is in-house with our call center. I walk outside and I see my drivers. I communicate with my drivers. My office walks outside, my call center walks outside, they communicate with the drivers. Hasbro out there who takes a call from Johnny Smith, could go over to talk to my driver, Travis, and talk about, hey, what happened with this guy? And they have that communication skill to do so. Cold standard insurance to meet all requirements. We refer it to the city as well. We comply with all laws and regulations. We have zero fines from the state or government or indictments. I think we're one of the only companies, at least privately-wise, can say we don't have that. I know other national companies can, I don't know if they can contest to that. Experience in large-scale rollout. I personally oversaw over 10 municipal rollouts in my career. I plan on adding more and successfully doing it with the City of Berwyn itself. Safety first and union. We're a safety-first company. We have weekly meetings with our drivers, and we're a local 731 with the same union as your current company and all the other companies. We do the same exact benefits. Exactly enough, three days ago, they just got a $3-an-hour raise, so it's going to be a larger impact on the system itself, but everybody's getting that raise, and we're proud to provide that for our drivers. Residential operations manager and productivity-resolving issues. Obviously, as a residential manager, I personally oversee all those calls. I demand answers immediately from my team. I don't wait until you can ask Caesar. I have a short, short wire when it comes to getting answers, and I want it within the hour, and I want it resolved. I want it out of my inbox. It drives me nuts when I see an email in my inbox for the issues. It drives me nuts when I see an email in my inbox for the issues and I want it gone and I make sure I get answers immediately and I can get a response to that resident. Obviously, a huge thing for the city, subscription organics. We're offering the same program up to a 35, 65, or 95. The pricing is provided in their packets. It is a one-time yearly charge instead of a monthly rental charge. We just do a one-time cost upfront provided by us separately from the city contract. Pumpkin recycling, something new for you guys. We could either offer the pumpkin recycling with the organics and we plan on doing two separate events with the city where residents can remove their pumpkins and bring it to a designated area, obviously provided by the city. Donations to local organizations, obviously we provided that for you guys today, showing our support. We hope that the baseball teams, football teams, volleyball teams, tennis teams contact us and help us to put our names on the back of their shirts and t-shirts and jerseys. We're going to do a Resident of the Quarter program, two per quarter. We're going to stop off at random residents, say hi, give them some SBC swag and a local gift card to a local restaurant in your area, in your restaurant, in your town. Scholarships for two high school seniors. I think this is a great program to promote high school seniors to getting off to college and better educating themselves. Like I said earlier, 24/7, 365 days of service. As your manager, those calls, all of your calls will go to me and me only directly. My plan is to execute them and end those calls within an hour. Obviously, 24 hours at the very worst, depending on the case. Continuous improvement and set the bar to equality. Our goal is always to set the bar. We can always improve. No one's perfect. We understand we have flaws. We understand we're a family-owned, smaller company, but our goal is to set ourselves to a high standard and fix those issues and resolve them immediately for you and your residents. Most importantly, City of Berwyn rollout. How are we going to do this? This is over, you know, roughly 17,000 to 20,000 homes. We would coordinate with city staff on a final version of a welcome packet and they have in a future slide here, I have an example of that. We would work with city staff on staging all equipment. Hopefully I would work with Bob at Public Works and Ruth. We would hope to get an address list of all addresses in the city, provided with all homeowners. We would visually drive the routes to confirm all location information is complete and accurate. We would set up our operation systems to most efficiently route the trucks. So when Paul was talking about Lytics, we have these tablets and when we take over a municipality, we personally drive through your community without the trucks or anything and automatically GPS tracks your community. So we take your addresses, we log them into our portal and then we drive through your community and upload those addresses through Google Earth and GPS modification. This is extremely important because I use this tool every day when I get a service call for any resident itself. We would do that prior to execution. We'd start cart deployment about two to three weeks prior to start date. We'd hope to work with waste management on the removal times, schedules, and we would deploy our carts roughly as they're removing at the same time, based on hopefully communication and, you know, just working together as a team. We would complete delivery of all city homes. We would drive, run by, we would be driving by all streets and alleys and confirm all equipment is deployed, gathering calls, any missed deliveries. Sometimes if you've got to cross a street with, you know, a quarter or something, there may be one or two homes that get missed. We would obviously immediately deploy those carts before deployment day. We would hope to start services April 1st and we would confirm success of the routes and make adjustments if necessary. If you looked at your next page, this is an example of the welcome packet we would mail and also provide on deployment day. So as the carts got delivered, we would leave this packet on the carts and we would also hope to work with the city and put this in the water mailer. People open their water bill, they tend not to open junk mail. I know personally, I open my water bill, I throw a lot of junk mail in the garbage, so we would hope to implement this into the city water bill itself. Turn to the second page, just some information about the new program for the residents. Obviously, we would provide this in English and Spanish. We would just talk about the 95 trash cart that's black and the 65 recycling cart. It just explains that the carts have wheels, lids, et cetera. The one bulk item per collection and no extra charge. Collection days is every Monday through Friday. Residents have the option to get a 135, 165, or 195 cart for organics. Explains the bulk items. Just some quick examples of bulk items that it's in construction re-raise for collection. Obviously, the recycling collection guidelines. Appliances, extremely important. They can contact Berwyn at sbcowast solutions dot com for free. Acceptable appliances. If someone's got a question about a certain appliance, like for example, I just got one the other day. It was a commercial-sized refrigerator, no issues, we removed it for them and no additional charge. And I'm talking about one that was a lot larger than your normal-sized fridge. Electronic waste is going to be removed at free and no additional charge. We offer that at curbside removal as well, all TVs, computers, cellphones, monitors, et cetera. Yard waste guidelines, obviously beginning April 1st, running through January 1st. Obviously, as I said before, pictures of the carts, black for trash, green for recycle and curbside for collection. Third page, the Berwyn Collection Days, Monday through Friday. Here's an example of the map we would use, very similar to what your current program is. And just a brief guideline about how SBC would be deploying the carts. We would be delivering the carts late in March of 2024. We obviously cannot guarantee an exact time or date for the resident to get their cart, but we ensure they will have it before the 1st. Obviously, additional information on the organic carts and the pricing and explains for the resident to call us at 312 or the email itself for the order of the carts itself. Please keep in mind, this is only an example. This is nothing that the city has approved. This is something I prepared. Obviously, I would work with city staff and Public Works and your, in the office to come up with a final version. This is just an example. Obviously, the Holiday Collection Service. With that being said, I would like to play just a quick video from our team, just to say thank you for allowing us to be here today.
My name's Karen Coley. I'm president and CEO of SBC Waste Solutions. We are so thrilled for the opportunity to service the city of Berwyn. The special thing about SBC is we really are family-owned. We really service our communities like their family and we have team members who live in Berwyn. This is taking care of our backyard, if you will.
It's mi casa. It's, I know those alleys, I played in those alleys. I know the people from the town. My niece, my nephew, to see our truck going through the alley, that's where my uncle works. You know, that's a lot to me.
We have so many people that speak different languages here. For me, I only speak English, so it's like, it's so easy when we have people, hey, I speak Spanish, let's pass them over. So I think it's going to be really helpful.
I grew up in Berwyn. My grandma, my cousin, my mom, my sisters, they all live in Berwyn. A lot of my family is only Spanish-speaking and I know sometimes they struggle calling companies. So it gives me comfort knowing that they'll be able to call here and anybody here could answer the phone and speak to them.
My mom, my dad, my brother, we all live in Berwyn. I grew up on Clinton Avenue and still to this day live there. It would be a privilege to get to serve my community, our community of Berwyn.
Here at SBC, our goal is to deliver services and the best possible service to the city of Berwyn and we're excited to become a part of the Berwyn family.
When the SBC trucks are rolling down the city's streets in Berwyn, people are going to look up and actually see that WBENC certification, that woman-owned certified company is servicing their town. And that's a game changer and we're honored to be that partner and we'll deliver a service that the city hasn't seen before.
In summary, SBC is a family, woman-owned company. We're community-focused and we're excited to have this opportunity with you all. We're local bilingual support across the board and we're environmentally focused. We continuously strive for improvement. Cost savings are significant, over $13 million to you and your residents. We look forward to servicing the city of Berwyn. I know there were some things addressed to us. I thought how a low bid is not always the best. Low bid doesn't mean anything about service quality. Low bid means we're here and we are still making a profit, maybe not at the profit as others are making, but we're here to make money, obviously, but obviously provide a better service for your community itself. And that's our promise to you guys. Thank you for the opportunity and is there any questions for me today?
Is there any questions?
Yeah, definitely. Now, you guys are a union outfit?
Yes, sir. Full unit, 731.
All your workers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Extra carts, now I see you're going to charge for extra carts, additional?
That is correct.
Okay. I look at the communities you serve, do you serve any communities going up and down alleys?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Broadview.
Broadview, that's all alleys?
Correct. It's not all alleys, but there is.
It's not, I know that is, it's not.
It's not, it's not all alleys.
Correct. Because this is a different beast in this town and going in these alleys and your trucks, are they all with lifts or you're going to hand?
We would have a mixture. So we'd have lifts and rail loaders.
Because you can't use your lift and be flipping in the trucks here with the way I saw in your video going down the street.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, so you're prepared for this?
Correct.
Okay. And I know there's a hell of a lot more containers here than you can imagine because the current provider has worked with certain aldermen, all our aldermen, if we need extra container, they do provide it. They do pick it up because there's overcrowding in situations in homes and you're going to charge the people for this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because a lot of them have an extra cart or two and they're not charged.
We do, the Village of Bridgeview, and I have houses that have six trash carts that we charge separately to the resident's office.
They're all paying you?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And you're bringing a whole new fleet of trucks in here?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And how would this, you know, there's a lot more homes here than I think, you know, you're saying, but, and how would you switch this over? How would this go from moving out their buckets into your buckets?
It depends on how, if you guys were to make the change, obviously, we would start deploying immediately about roughly three weeks prior to execution date.
And just start throwing cans beyond houses?
That is correct.
Along next to the current provider?
If they're removing at the same time, we would hope to work with them and work in those wards and as they're removing, we would be deploying behind them.
Do you own your own dump site?
We do not.
You do not? So where do you dump? Transfer sites?
We actually work with your current provider. We actually work with multiple other vendors.
So you're dumping at the current provider?
Well, that's one location, but we dump at Heartland Recycling, LRS Lake Shore Recycling.
Okay, you go to Lake Shore along the canal?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and those are the locations?
Obviously, per your contract, the trash goes to McCook at Groot, so we would be dumping the waste for the city at McCook, at Groot, the same location that waste is doing.
Okay.
The recycling for the city would probably most likely go to Heartland Recycling over in Forest View.
Okay. Yeah, I know Cicero dumps there now, so.
Unless waste management's willing to give me a good price.
Okay, there you go. So, okay, so I was just concerned with the extra containers because I know there's a hell of a lot of them in this town. So bulk items, you said, you're going to include, electronics?
Free.
All free, included?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman?
Yeah, I have an additional question that's sort of built off of Alderman Fate. For our community, we have a lot of apartment buildings, two flats. How many carts would those buildings get per unit?
I would work with Public Works to confirm how many carts, but we don't ask for an address list of those and we would obviously do site inspections prior to deployment date. So if the city would provide us with a list of all the multi-unit buildings, we would knock that out prior to execution date and just confirm how many carts they have and just deploy those carts immediately.
Okay. And then this might seem like the million-dollar question, but how are you all saving this much money? Where's the saving coming from?
There's multiple savings. I mean, when it comes to electronics, backdoor service, just your current rates in general. I mean, if you look at your surrounding neighborhoods, you guys are paying somewhat of the highest prices in the Chicagoland area compared to certain areas. It just depends on your community. Obviously, Berwyn is extremely condensed and labor-intensive and we understand that, but based off our configurations, we can handle that at the price that we can do. Obviously, we don't have shareholders to answer to. We are not a publicly traded company, so we're able to set the pricing ourselves and manage it ourselves and be able to micromanage certain things maybe better than a publicly traded company can do. Obviously, we don't have to show extreme large profits as well when it comes to certain things.
Yeah. And on the city side, if we were saving this much money, how much of that savings would be passed on to the residents with their, their like waste and water bills? Would that connect to that or would that be?
It probably would connect in some fashion. I don't know the exact answer to that question at this time because obviously the billing would go down. The residents are billed based on what we're charged now. So I would presume the billing would go down. I haven't worked those numbers out and I don't know that Ruth has yet.
Is that something we can do? Right.
Of course. I don't see why not. I mean, yeah. Right now, our billing is, it's all based on the resident pays what their proportion of our current bill.
We have, I have started looking at that with our finance director to see how this would roll out and also if you notice in the slides that they put their start date would be April 1st. So just to give the council the time to make the decision without cramming it in, we were able to negotiate with waste management so that they would be able to, for the new company, if we were to switch, that they could get their trucks in time. That's why they said April 1st is a date and we were able to negotiate with waste management. If council did decide to switch companies, waste management would be able to cover the first three months, but at the new rate, which would be slightly higher. So for the first year, after you calculate that with the lower rate from SBC, it kind of evens out for the year. So those cost savings wouldn't be as extreme during the first year, but maybe better off in the next one if there would be a change in companies. So we did take into consideration giving you the option if you decided to switch companies so we wouldn't be hurried just to make that transit, you know, one company to another, that transition a little smoother. We were able to have, waste management was very courteous with us and able to extend their services for three months to allow that transition to go smoother.
I would love to see that, if we could see like those projections.
We need to see those numbers, yeah. I mean, it looks like about a $2 million savings a year throughout the contract. What's that going to break down to the households? Is it going to be $2, $3? You know, we need to know.
Ben, are you able to supply that?
Correct, yes. We started one of our collaborations.
And again, just so you understand what the administrative, city administrator was saying is, we had to extend and Vaughn was kind enough to give us an extension for three months on the current contract, but we had to do it at the higher rate. So between that higher rate and if you did pick SBC at that lower rate, the first year would not really be savings. It would not come into effect until later.
My question for council then, we've already done preliminary work. We were looking at doing a vote by the next council meeting. Would you prefer that we have that present, like the information at the open cow for you or?
I think the sooner they could get in their hands, the sooner that we can make a decision, only because both companies are going to need to prepare whatever is going to go on here.
I will work with our finance company. That way, we can get you the information hopefully by the beginning of next week, that we would send an email, if that's okay with the mayor, to the different elected officials. That way, you have it prior to voting on this at the subsequent meeting in October.
And I will say that I did check out the references. My good friend, Mayor Thompson in Broadview, is very pleased with SBC, especially you brought up the sustainability environment and she's very much into the C4 and the environment and she was very pleased. I think there was one little hill or something that you guys resolved pretty quickly, she said, so. And again, let's not forget, we've, and again, waste management is here. We've had good rapport with waste management over the years and they've worked with us. So it's a matter of what you guys think is appropriate with respect to what you can do for the residents.
One more question, are we getting all the roll-off boxes we won over at Public Works?
Yes, sir.
That's included in the price?
That is, that was in the RFP, yes.
That's in here?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. What about our special city events?
Yes, sir, that is, that was in the RFP as well. That is all included.
Okay.
Alderman, raise.
Bob, how many households do we actually have? Do you know? I mean, obviously you have a ballpark figure.
It was in the RFP that I shared. We did a breakdown between, I can pull it right now. We did a breakdown within the RFP that I handed out at the last council meeting that shows how many single families, how many duplexes and three flats, and we go up to four flats within our contract. So those.
Do you know roughly what? Do you know roughly what that total was? Not by category, but collect.
I think it totally was about 20,000.
It was around 20,000?
Yeah, it's right around 20,000 because four flats and higher are on their own services, so.
And then how long would our contract be? Um, would that be a two-year contract, a one-year contract?
Five-year.
It's a five-year con, so we would be locked in at this, at these rates for five years?
Well, there's a, there's an increase per year.
What is, what is it?
2.5%.
2.5?
The lowest out of any bidder.
And then, so, yeah, I'm just a little bit leery about a $7 million investment and how you recoup that. You know, I mean, that's got to come from somewhere. Um, and then these new trucks means new employees and, um, new trucks means ordering. And with, since COVID, things have been so delayed and backlogged for, for months. Do you speculate having any issues getting these new trucks in or even these, um, totes that are, that will be required to take us on at 20,000 units?
So I've already provided city staff with a letter of commitment from the car company, uh, guaranteeing the carts and deployment. They will have it ready to go for us. Actually, they have a location up north, um, here in Illinois, which is great.
How many new staff are you going to have to hire for this big of a?
Oh, we're estimating anywhere between 12 to 15. But we're going to also promote with inside.
How about the trucks? She asked about the trucks, too.
Uh, you were estimating anywhere between 12 to 15 trucks, but we're also going to reroute some stuff around and work with city staff on it. We believe we could do things better and more efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I can give those numbers. Um, on page 27, we have the house counts. Um, we have 12,607 residential units. Single family is 9,896, duplexes 1,961, three flats are 658, and four flats are 92. But these numbers are pretty recent because last year, um, within the last two years, we've been working with Waste Management and they've been fine tuning, um, all the accounts here with the city, which includes all the different units that we have. So those numbers are very recent.
I didn't total them, but I'm pretty sure it's around 20,000.
Our 24 units considered commercial and those are, um, different.
Anything above four units, I believe, are considered commercial and they would have to have their own private dumpster. We don't provide service for those.
Thank you, Ruth.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get those, uh, the breakdown, um, for the residents to you guys as soon as possible, as soon as Ben can get them out, so that you guys know what you're looking at.
Thank you.
That's fine. We'll take that in the final section before I turn. You can get a smile, too.
Nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Ben, do you want to use the podium as it sits here so that, yeah, we don't have to move that right now? Okay, so next up, we have our, uh, 2,000, take care, gentlemen, C F O N. We have our 2022 annual financial report from Ben Dash, our finance director, and our auditor, John Wasaki.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Hi, John.
All right, presentation.
Ben, you're going to lead it off.
We're going to do it up here, Johnny.
Okay, does, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, there's three handouts that everybody should have. The report, the presentation, and the SaaS 14 auditor communication, so. If everybody has that, we can, we can begin. Uh, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, I, tonight, I'd like to introduce you to our audit partner at GW and Associates, John Wasaki. And we will be presenting the 2022 comprehensive financial report. Um, if you've turned the page, the overview of our presentation will include the financial highlights as well as the general fund summary analysis, our auditor communication, and the status of the city's single audits. But first, um, we'd like to get right into the financial highlights, um, specifically focusing on pages 33 through 39 of the comprehensive report. Um, the general fund, uh, page 33 to 35. The city, uh, was able to experience a $5.6 million surplus in 2022 that increases the city's fund balance to $18.7 million. Uh, the fund balance requirement, the minimum, um, 16% requirement is at $10 million. Again, having a strong fund balance is very important to cushion for future unanticipated expenditures and any future revenue downturns. Um, while the city is in, well, we are encouraged by the, uh, the surplus, um, it's really important that, that we can continue to budget and, and remain conservative in our revenue expectations. And even more, more important, manage our, manage the expenditures responsibly. And it's important to do this because, you know, we touched upon economic uncertainty. Um, we're talking about inflation. We're talking about interest rates. And, uh, the prospect of a global recession is always a possibility. So it's really important that we remain, um, and these are all factors that, um, influence the main drivers of our revenue. Um, it's, and we have to remember that the city did experience deficits in the past, specifically in 2018. The council approved, uh, $746,000 deficit as well as tragically the 2020 COVID pandemic, uh, loss of 763,000. Uh, turning the page again, um, this, this table provides a summary of how things have been going with the general fund and encouraging results. Uh, we've experienced, uh, significant, um, significant growth in our revenues, but, uh, the city's been able to manage the expenses so that the growth in expenditures is much, is more moderate. And it's led to, um, building upon our fund balance. Now, our fund balance, um, right now, um, we talked about the 16% requirement. Um, our fund balance percentage is 30%, and that's, um, the percentage of the 2023 budgeted expenditures. So, um, we're encouraged by these results in, in, you know, in summary, um, you know, it's been the, the state income, state sales, and home rule taxes as the main drivers of, of the surplus along with some service, along with the service revenues. Um, again, we need to be cautious as we're budgeting going forward for, um, future economic uncertainty. Turning the page again, um, want to, on page, on, on your report, pages 37 through 39, um, it presents the utility fund results, um, which consists of our water and garbage along with our, um, garage, uh, revenues. And for the utility fund, um, the operating income improved versus 2021 by $1 million. Um, this additional, um, income, um, is important as it results in more funding available um, for our current and future debt service, bond and interest payments in addition to, um, future capital infrastructure improvements. So it's very, very encouraging results and it's important to be able to build upon further on our reserves. With that being said, I'd like to present John Wasaki, who will go into further our required auditor communications as, as well as, um, the status of our single audits. John?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for allowing us once again to perform the audit of the city. Um, and want to first direct your attention to page nine of the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report. And that is our independent auditor's report. And, uh, once again, we have, um, are expressing a, what we call a unmodified or clean opinion regarding the financial statements. Uh, so based on the audit procedures that we perform, we feel that the information is fairly presented in accordance with the proper standards. And, uh, we also note in here that, uh, while we assist in the preparation of the whole report, it's really management's responsibility for the report and our responsibility is to audit this information. Then on the, uh, stapled letter that you have, that is, uh, a required communication required by statement on auditing standards number 114 that we have to, uh, communicate certain information at the conclusion of the audit. Uh, and, um, that includes, uh, our audit adjustments that are in the back of the letter. Uh, nothing, you know, too extraordinary as far as, uh, that communication. The, uh, there was a new, uh, uh, government, uh, accounting pronouncement that was implemented during the year, uh, this GASB 87 related to leases. Um, really not much of a net impact on, you know, the bottom line, but it did result in recording and receivable for, um, uh, leases where the city is a lessor, like, uh, for example, your, um, cell tower leases. Um, and also, uh, a lease payable, uh, related to the, uh, vehicle fleet that you're leasing. Uh, now, next year, there will be another new pronouncement, um, with the accounting very similar to this, but it'll be for, um, so what they call subscription-based information technology agreements. So, um, that'd be something that we'd, uh, probably work with the IT director in gaining all the information related to any, um, longer-term agreements that you have uh, for use of information technology. That would need to be recorded for the, the first time as a payable on, on your financial statements next year. Um, then finally, the single audit, uh, which, um, again, is a, the audit of compliance with the federal requirements for your federal funding. Um, in the 2021 single audit, we had no findings. The 2022 single audit is almost done. We're, we're working on wrapping that up. Uh, there were three major programs that we, uh, were auditing, uh, major federal programs. One was C D B G. And then the other two were related to the I E P A loans. Um, but there, there's two separate federal programs that you receive money on for that. One is from the drinking water state revolving funds and the other is the clean water state revolving funds. Um, not sure why the federal government distinguishes them. You kind of think that your drinking water would be clean water, but, um, they are two separate programs there. So, uh, this year, we are auditing three major federal programs, which in the past, we usually only had to do one or two. So, uh, it's been a little more work on that, but that is close to being completed. So at your next meeting, we should have, uh, that report to pass out to you. Um, any questions?
Anything else you have, Ben, or is that? Alderman, any questions? It's a lot of stuff to go through, I understand. That's why we try to summarize.
You can ask questions later, right?
You can, that's, but yeah, that's why he tried to summarize it in his handout so that it makes it a little easier. Uh, but yeah, if you have questions, I would say direct them directly to Finance Director Dash. Um, but when they bring up the, um, report on the federal audit, um, that they have to do, we can also ask questions at that time, too. Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have nothing else for committee of the whole. If I can have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Carmichael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The guys have it. Okay, see you back at 8:00.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it. Uh, 12 doesn't work. All the other days are fine.
Hello.
Hey.
Oh, yeah.
Turn it on.
Oh, yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, it's the same weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
How are you? How are you feeling?
Good.
You know mine? Am I gonna tell her? Or are you gonna tell her? The reason you're in a little trouble? Because our favorite auditor, we know where they're at.
They didn't call that thing, they got off hard.
I brought this on for you.
Thank you.
How are you?
I don't know what it is. It will be, it will be like somebody.
Okay.
How about this? How about this? Uh-oh. Is it from the party?
No, not for me. Not for me.
Is it an entree in your life?
Because this is the third time. You just got a birthday in April. I'm on the date. It's not a, no. Just read the card.
Oh, on Friday, yeah. The one in Brooklyn?
Yeah. I think it's Friday.
There you go.
I did not, I didn't, I didn't.
Um, the question was, um-
Right.
Oh, Chris Brown.
Three.
Five.
Oh, Chris Brown.
Jesus? Oh, Mark.
Okay.
Maybe I'll give you anything.
Oh.
Did you throw it to him?
Yeah.
That is all.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Hey.
Here you go. That's it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm glad I could find you.
Hello.
Thank you.
Well, we don't say, we change the wording a little bit, so. Yeah, it's a couple of weeks. Okay. Talk about. You're welcome. You're right. Yes, I can. What do you want? You're right. Yeah. Right. There you go. Yeah. All right. Um, yeah, maybe it's gonna be. Okay. Do me a favor. Do me a favor, because you're a big-
You want me to pull it down?
No, can you just move this?
Yes.
Come on, help me.
Oh, to the front.
Yeah.
Oh, it's got weird.
What's up, man?
Hey, we can be pretty much double the rate. They're finished, yeah.
Budget meetings.
Oh, okay.
Clerk Polk, we call a council meeting to order, please.
Lennon?
Here.
Roywood?
Here.
Here.
Leja?
Here.
Fate?
Here.
Pavon?
Here.
Ruiz?
Here.
Aronella?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Eight present, mayor.
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of our good friend Nora Loretto, our former alderman from the Eighth Ward, a true community member who's given of herself through her whole life here in Berwyn, born and raised in Berwyn. She has recently passed. She's been my friend since first grade, grade school, and she'll be truly missed. If we could keep that family and Nora in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Jose Ramirez. I live at 31st and Clarence. Mayor, first off, my condolences.
Thank you.
I know Nora was a good friend of yours and she always treated me very kind, so my condolences to the whole Loretto family.
Thank you.
I'm here today because as an ex-alderman, I feel I'd like to give my point of view on a stipend increase that's being proposed. Well, as an alderman, I can say firsthand that $10,000 doesn't cover what an alderman does and the sacrifices that the alderman's family puts out. But that said, I don't believe it was ever meant to be compensation, a salary to an alderman. An alderman and the mayor, as the head of the city, you lead us. You take us where we need to go. How do you put a price on that? That's invaluable. So, $10,000, $37,000, $87,000, the money itself should not be looked at as a salary. It is meant as a, you know, acknowledgement of the job well done. So, is there an increase warranted? Absolutely. I think there should be money given. What's being proposed, though, I think is a little out of whack. The total of what is being proposed would bring the city to $257,500. Hope my math is good, but math is not my greatest, but that's what I came up with, is increase a year to the budget. So, what I asking is, how are we paying for this? How do we pay for this when we are millions and millions in debt? Our infrastructure needs addressing. I feel that there's maybe three solutions. One, we cut city services. Two, we borrow and get deeper in debt. Or three, we increase property taxes. I'm asking city council to consider a more reasonable incremental salary increase or stipend increase before voting yes on this tonight. I read a little bit on Facebook and I honestly don't care what they do in Oak Park, in Cicero, in Elmwood Park. I live in Berwyn. This is my city, and that's what I care about. So, what I'd like to see also is, Second Ward Alderman Roywood, you've had one meeting since you've been in office. Have another. Explain to us, before you vote yes, if you are going to vote yes, why you deserve this increase? Why an alderman deserves to go from $10,000 to $37,500 and then ultimately higher. I'd be happy to be at that meeting and hear, you know, what the plan is. Alderman Ruiz, how do we pay for this? You know, again, I believe the aldermen deserve and earned an increase. It's just where do you put that figure? That figure is hard to come by because, first of all, nobody up there depends. You all have second jobs. I've had a second job and I've never known an alderman when I lived here the last 20-something years. I mean, if you're retired, but aside from that, whose job is solely to be an alderman. So, all I'm asking here is that, you know, one, before you vote for this, you consider an incremental increase, a more reasonable incremental increase. Two, you have a public meeting with your constituents to say, hey, listen, this is why I deserve a raise. I'll be at your meeting and I'll be glad to tell the residents what an alderman does and how hard, and $10,000 doesn't cover it, you know? But it needs to be done correctly, and that's why I'm here today, just to say we deserve, as the city of Berwyn and the residents, a more reasonable and transparent way of doing an increment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience for open forum?
Good evening, my name is Steve Taylor. I live at 27th and Kennelworth, and I was asked to read this from Michael Solway. Michael Solway. I oppose the proposed pay hike for the offices of mayor and alderperson for several reasons. One, a raise is customarily given to an employee for a history of exceptional work. This cannot be said from any of the members of the city council, especially those affiliated with the DCOB. Two, the record of fiscal irresponsibility does not warrant increased compensation. In the years following the election of Mayor Lovero and his handpicked slate of alderpersons, the city's debt ballooned by millions of dollars, and so has the tax burden for the citizens of Berwyn. Three, much of this irresponsible spending comes in the form of lucrative contracts to Berwyn political donors and other cronies. Not missing words here, this is a corruption tax on the citizens of Berwyn. Four, in this time, city services have not improved. Schools have not improved, the rap population has exploded, and we are near the west, we are in the near west suburban Mecca for video gambling. Five, the job of Berwyn alderperson is part-time job and many similar communities in the position is voluntary and unpaid. In neighboring municipalities, the salary slash stipend is far lower than our current compensation, let alone an increase of almost 250% for politicians that show up to vote twice a month, sitting with their backs to the residents of our city. Six, short of future tax increases or service cuts, we simply do not have the money to fund these arbitrary unworthful pay increases. And lastly, I encourage the members of the city council to honestly reflect on the state of our city in good consciousness and vote no on these massive pay increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, our honorable members of city council and fellow citizens of Berwyn. My name is Natalia Perez. I stand before you today to express my heartfelt gratitude on behalf of the Christian Life Center Church for the Food Pantry. For years, the Food Pantry has been a lifeline for many individuals and families in our community who struggle with food insecurity. The dedication and tireless efforts of the volunteers at the pantry have made a significant impact on the lives of countless people. However, there was a time when the future of this essential resource seemed uncertain. But thanks to the support and involvement of the city of Berwyn, the pantry will continue running. Your commitment to our community's well-being has shown through your understanding of the importance of this service. Your action has not only prevented the closure of the pantry, but has also ensured that individuals and families in need will continue to receive the assistance they deserve. I would like to take this opportunity to invite each and every one of you, as well as our fellow citizens, to come and volunteer anytime at Christian Life Center Food Pantry. The pantry is every Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 3409 Grove Avenue. Together, we can make a lasting impact and ensure that no one in Berwyn goes hungry. Thank you again to the city of Berwyn for your continuous support.
Thank you, Natalia. Anybody else from the audience?
Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am a First Ward resident. I'm a junior at Morton West High School, and I'm also the president of JSA over there. Over last week, for Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, our chapter helped hand out 1,500 ribbons to all of our faculty and students at Morton West. This is the second year that we have participated in this activism, and it most certainly will not be the last. Many of our students have come up to us saying how grateful they were that they were having resources and that people were spreading awareness for suicide, considering that it is one of the greatest causes of death amongst teens. And I wanted to recap with this event with you to show how important it is to have resources for mental health in our city and especially for youth and adults as well. Thank you so much, and yeah?
Could you repeat your name for the record?
Yedira Padilla. Sorry, I forgot about that part. Thank you.
Thanks, Yedira.
That's a tough act to follow. Thanks, Yedira. I'm Sandra Montez. I'm a Berwyn resident. I live at 6918 30th Place. I'm the owner of In Motion Counseling, a counseling private practice located here in Berwyn. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, a certified drug alcohol counselor, as well as a school social worker. And I'm here to talk about Suicide Awareness Month. I'm so excited to hear about the awareness that we're lifting in our youth because it is something that is an issue in every community, of every background, of every peoples. And we come here every month to talk about it, and we've done our proclamations, but more than anything today, I want to talk about preventing suicide. We are a community in mourning, and the best way that we can prevent mental health issues and suicide depression is through community. And so, I encourage all of us to be kinder to each other, to check in with each other, because loneliness and isolation is the real killer here. And so, again, there are resources out at the table, but the resources are within us to be nice and kind, given how a lot of us here are struggling today, including myself. And so, I hope that if you are in need of more services, you can reach out to me. I can connect you. They have great agencies here in Berwyn, including our mental health centers, your local physician, and other great therapists, because, you know, in case you don't want to talk to me about that, because I know you, I can connect you with some great people. So, thank you so much, and let's continue to fight suicide.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman, you have anything for open forum? I'm sorry.
My name's Katie Jacobson. I live at 3502 Grove in the First Ward, and I stand with Jose and many others that can't be here tonight in regards to this ridiculous raise. I agree you'd need a raise, but it should be tiered. You're talking about giving yourselves a raise, where you're going to be making the, almost the equivalent of a first-year teacher in Berwyn, who went to college for four years and works with our kids and teaching our kids. It's a part-time job. So is the mayoral job. There's elections coming up. There's a lot of things coming up. Now is not the time, unless you guys can get this city out of debt. Now's not the time to do this. I want you guys to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, anything for open forum?
Yes, mayor. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to remind everyone that the annual Morton High School Homecoming Parade is this Saturday, September 30 at 10 o'clock, from Morton East High School, south on Austin Boulevard, to 26th Street West, on 26th Street, to Home Avenue, north on Home, to the Morton Parking Lot. Everyone is welcome.
Okay. Alderman?
I just want to thank everyone that celebrated, has spent character this weekend with the original and initiated events that I curated, starting last year in 2022. The event was significantly attended. It grew in just one year. It doubled in parade participants. It doubled in festival vendors, and it doubled in those attending. So, it was extraordinary to see that there is space created for our Latino community, our Hispanic community, to share the culture and traditions here in the community, and that our elected officials, many of our elected officials took place in that, in sharing that celebration and embracing it and encouraging it. So, I want to especially thank the Public Works Department for their role in making this happen, the Berwyn Police Department and their role in making it happen, and all of our sponsors and vendors that took the time to contribute and sponsor to make the event as successful as it has been. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, anything else? I do have one item. October 4th is the Walk and Roll to School Day. Unfortunately, it got to us a little late, so I'm going to have a proclamation at the next meeting, but I want to remind everybody, those elected officials, we've all been invited to attend to schools. I know Irving is kicking off at 8 o'clock on the South End. One of the important items about the Walk and Roll to School Day was brought forward because of the lack of physical activity that leads to role in obesity and diabetes and other health problems among children. So, let's remember the whole meaning behind the Walk and Roll Day, October 4th, for all our schools. Thank you. Item C1, please.
Item C1 are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole and the regular meeting that took place on September 12, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole and Regular City Council Meetings, meeting for September 12.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Roywood, to approve the City Council Minutes, Meeting Minutes, as well as the Committee of the Whole Minutes of September 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E1, please.
Item E1 is a communication from the Berwyn Township Assessor.
Crystal?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of Township Assessor Jacqueline Pareta. She couldn't make it today. I'm Crystal. I'm her deputy assessor at the township. I'm just here to remind everybody that Berwyn is now currently open for tax appeals on their property tax assessment. This is the last opportunity that Berwyn residents have to file an appeal to contest their 2023 property valuation. Our office is assisting with this appeals until Friday, October 13. The online application process is open until October 17. That would be the online deadline. If residents need assistance, looking for comparables, they can always contact our office, and we'll be happy to assist with that. Additionally, I also wanted to let residents know that if you did suffer through any of the flooding this past summer, you may qualify for an assessment reduction based on the damages. If you've already filed an application with FEMA, be sure to bring any information that you've received to our office when you file your appeal. We will provide you a PTAX 245 form to include, and we will submit all of that evidence to the Board of Review. Our office hours are Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, you're welcome to contact us anytime from here to then. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
I move that we accept this communication from the Berwyn Township Assessor Jacqueline Pareta regarding the opening of the Board of Review Appeals as informational.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Pavon, to consider the communication informational and encourage everybody to appeal the assessments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is a proclamation regarding banned book week in Berwyn. Whereas the freedom to read and intellectual freedom are essential to our democracy and the preservation of a free society, and reading is among our greatest freedoms. And whereas some individuals, groups, and public authorities work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to censor content in schools and libraries, to label controversial views, to distribute lists of objectionable books or authors, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity of society. And whereas the American Library Association's banned books week, celebrating the freedom to read, celebrates the freedom to choose or the freedom to express one's opinion, even if that opinion might be considered unpopular, and stresses the importance of ensuring the availability of those unpopular viewpoints to all who wish to read them. And whereas Governor J.B. Pritzker and State Librarian Alexi Genoulias passed legislation in June of 2023, making the state of Illinois the first state in the nation to outlaw book banning. And whereas the American Library Association's theme for 2023 is "Let Freedom Read", which signifies that the safety of our right to speak and think freely is directly signifies that the safety of our right to speak and think freely is directly in proportion to our right to read. And whereas the Berwyn Public Library believes that reading is an individual choice and strongly opposes censorship and attempts, and those attempts to remove or restrict access to books. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, and the esteemed members of the City Council proclaim October 1st to October 7, 2023, banned books week in the city of Berwyn, and call upon public officials, educators, and residents to encourage people to read freely now and forever.
I'll make a motion to adopt this proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Roywood, to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Director Sheedy, I believe you are here to accept the proclamation with some others.
Board when she did pass, so let's remember that. Thank you. Item F2, please.
Item F2 is a communication regarding the award of local technical assistance grant for an Americans with Disabilities Act plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's my motion to accept this communication as information regarding the award of local technical assistance grant for an Americans with Disabilities Act. No, resolution. Oh, I'm sorry.
You did your motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Did you have something else to add?
Okay.
You sure?
Mayor, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution. So affix the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
A motion by Ruiz to adopt the resolution for the award of the local technical assistance grant for Americans with disabilities by Ruiz, seconded by Lennon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G1, please.
Item G1 is a resolution from the Clerk to release closed Committee of the Whole meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution, affix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to adopt the resolution, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I2, please.
Item I1 is a communication from Alderman Leja requesting reversal of a previously denied handicap parking space at 6826 26th Street.
I move that the council concur with my recommendation to approve the previously denied handicap parking space at 6826 West 26th Street.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Carmichael, to approve the previously denied application for the handicap spot at 6826 West 26th Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I2, please.
Item I2 is a communication from Alderman Ruiz regarding council members and mayoral salary increases for the term starting in 2025.
Before I place my motion on the floor, I'd like to share a few points regarding the council member salaries for 2025. The last salary increase was in 1996. In 2025, if the increase should be approved, it would be 29 years since these positions received an increase. I do not know any employee that would accept, take on a role, or remain in a position knowing that they would not receive an equitable salary increase, but be expected to increase their workload for 29 years. The comparison of part-time versus full-time position. I know many individuals, family, friends, coworkers, who work a full-time and a part-time job. The numbers of, the number of hours a person work is irrelevant. What is relevant is the position they hold and the work they must perform. I don't know any individual that finds it satisfactory to be compensated less to accept a part-time position because they have a full-time one. The work of the mayor and older persons are 24/7. I'm sure I am not the only elected official that has been contacted on a Sunday morning, weekday evening, or during a holiday. Why? Because our city does not stop. When our families are in need, I don't place them on hold because it is after hours. That is what our position requires. Although some may feel being first in line to contact for assistance is not our role, there are many that feel it is our role. So do we neglect them because they have a different opinion? In regards to comparables, what is the best salary for these positions? Where are these salaries coming from? What are the comparables? Well, the comparables are right here in our own backyard. Currently, the Berwyn Township Health and Health District have elected officials who make significantly more than both the mayor and older persons in our part-time positions, the Berwyn Township Supervisor and the Township Assessor. While some may argue this is a combined salary for their roles, nevertheless, the salaries are significantly higher. Currently, the supervisor's salary is above $80,000, and the assessor's role is 60, salary is $60,000. That is significantly higher than the mayor and older persons. In my opinion, neither of those roles' expectancies are comparable to the role of the mayor or older persons. The mayor is first-in-command, frontline-centered, and more often is required to make split-second decisions regarding daily matters. I personally do not believe the role of the supervisor nor the assessor is comparable to the daily work expected of the mayor or older persons. Additionally, these two roles have staff, have office space, and have a budget. How is that equitable and comparable to the roles of older persons that have not received an increase in 29 years? And why have we not? Because it's never the right time. It's never the right year. It's election season. It's budget. It's one issue after another. So for 29 years, it has not been the right time. Also, I forgot to mention that both of these roles also receive COLA. That is a cost-of-living allowance. How is this equitable? How is this comparable to the work that we all do in the same city, serving the same residents, serving the same population? I understand that this increase can appear unjustifiable, but in order to create a more equitable salary, it would take another 29 years to balance the equity scale. Therefore, an increase in the amount proposed after 29 years is unavoidable. More importantly, the increase is not mandated. Therefore, any returning or newly-elected official can decline the increase and remain at $10,000. I feel very confidently that newly-elected officials will agree the salary is equitable and accept it. For those of you that choose that this is not equitable, this is not acceptable, this is not the right time, I hope that in 2025, when you are re-elected, that you remain at your $10,000 salary because you voted today not to accept this change. My motion, therefore, is to request your approval to increase the salaries as proposed in my communication. Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to increase the salaries as proposed in the communication. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Just like to make a little statement. I do believe that we do deserve a raise. I think we do need a raise. I think the mayor's salary that she's asking for is okay, but at this time, I can't vote for an Alderman raise of this, so I vote no.
Pabon?
Nay.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
No.
Five ayes, Mayor.
Five ayes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alderman, would you make another motion to refer this, so we go to draft the resolution?
We don't have a resolution for salaries.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We do? I've never been able to find it. Well, either way, I, in addition, I would like to have the ordinance modified and have the necessary signatures affixed and pass, send it on its way to passage.
You want to refer it to legal to draft that?
Yes. Have it forwarded to legal for drafting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, a motion by Ruiz, seconded by Roywood, to refer the communication to legal for the proper drafting of the ordinance and/or resolution, whatever is necessary, fix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For those of you that have questioned raises, be aware that these raises will not take effect until after the 2025 election. Understand that, as former Aldermen mentioned here at the podium, the Aldermen are grossly underpaid for what they do. Some people have tried to compare the work of the Aldermen here in Berwyn to the work of Aldermen in other communities who do nothing but show up at a meeting and vote. That's not how it works here in Berwyn, folks. Some people have said we should hire more staff to field residents' concerns. That's going to cost more money than what is being asked for here today. And those concerns are handled by City Hall through the mouthpiece of the Aldermen. The Aldermen bring those all to City Hall. We handle the concerns. But they're the first line of defense. They're the people that hear the questions. They're the people that hear the concerns. They're the ones that are out there working for the constituents. If you believe that a given Alderman, at any given time, is not worth that money, then don't vote for him, because they're not going to get it until this next election. As far as the mayor's spot, I've always been opposed to a raise because I knew what I got myself into when I first ran. I will not be running again, but I believe that the person who comes after me does deserve additional sums of money. So that's just my comment on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item J1, please.
Item J1 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller with an ordinance that reads, "An ordinance authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Berwyn and the county of Cook for the 2023 Invest in Cook Program with the city of Berwyn, county of Cook, state of Illinois."
It'd be my motion to concur with Director Schiller's request to approve the attached ordinance and intergovernmental agreement for the approval of IGA with Cook County for the improvements of 16th Street from Harlem Avenue to Lombard Avenue, Phase II Engineering. Fix the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the ordinance and the intergovernmental agreement for the Cook County improvements on 16th Street from Harlem to Lombard Avenue, Phase II Engineering. Affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J2, please.
J2 is a communication from City Administrator Siaba Green regarding the direct energy supply contract review.
Be my motion to concur with City Administrator Green and execute an energy sales agreement with direct energy for a contract term of three years with a cost of $0.0605 per kilowatt.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Leja, to concur with City Administrator Green and approve the contract for direct energy for three years with the cost as he said. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J3, please.
J3 is a communication from City Administrator Siaba Green regarding natural gas supply contract with Symmetry Energy Solutions.
Be my motion to concur with Administrator Green, execute an energy sales agreement with Symmetry Energy Solutions LLC for a contract of three years with a cost of $0.47970 per therm.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Leja, to concur with the recommendation of City Administrator Green and execute the contract agreement with Symmetry Energy Solutions LLC for three years for about five cents. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J4, please.
J4 is a communication from Finance Director Dash regarding Pitney Bowes contract, NASPO Value Point CTR05880.
I'll make the motion to waive the bidding process and approve the Relay 5,000 inserter machine, along with the Pitney Ship Pro certified mail software for a 16-month duration at a cost not to exceed $1,063.46 a month.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Roywood, to concur with Finance Director Ben Dash, waive the bidding process, and approve the contract with NASPO Value Point for six-month duration, not to exceed $1,063.46 per month. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Roywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aronella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J5, please.
J5 is a communication from Director Dash regarding the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as informational.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to accept the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Carmichael, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman committee meetings. Alderman Lennon?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Roywood?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Leja?
Call of the chair.
And I appear, I understand it's your birthday on Friday, so happy birthday, Alderman Leja.
Thank you.
Alderman Faith?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Pabon?
Call of the chair.
Alderman Ruiz?
Call the chair.
Alderman Aronella?
Call the chair.
Oh, no, never mind. Call the chair.
Alderman Carmichael.
Call the chair. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, seconded by Aronella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.